Recording in progress. Are we ready to begin? Okay, good evening. Welcome to the school committee meeting of Thursday, April twenty seventh. In keeping with an act relative to certain state extended state of emergency accommodations, the meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom. Attendance by board members will be remote and remote attendance shall count toward quorum. The meeting will be broadcast live and recorded on ECAT. The meeting will be open to the public and questions will be taken via the chat feature. Full name and address must be included with questions and questions that have already been answered will not be read. First item on the agenda is reorganization of the school committee. I would like to once again thank Caroline O'Neal for her thirty years of devoted service. And I would like to welcome and acknowledge our new member Lauren Loomis. Congratulations, Lauren.
Thank you.
So the first order of business is to nominate the chair of the committee. And...
Go ahead.
As a nominator.
Do we have a motion for that nomination?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Jen Starr. Ump team billion reasons why. Why does she was with budgets and all things numbers? She's an active member of a variety of committees outside of the obligatory school committee. Things like Eastern Mass CPAC and the superintendent advisory committee. He advocates for students of special needs and all our students. And she has a lot of great ideas for the school committee going forward and her leadership will be a key to the success for those initiatives.
Okay, do we have a second on the motion?
Wise man, second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wise man, yes.
Loomis, yes.
And Starr, yes. Thank you.
Yay.
Chair, chairperson Starr, I turn the meeting over to you.
Great, thank you all. Thank you, thank you, Michelle, for your very kind words. Okay, so, uh, so next up on the agenda is the, uh, the vote to appoint a vice chair. And, um, I know that, uh, Michelle Durant is interested in, um, in serving in this position. And it certainly thank you for raising your hand for that. This is before we look for a motion, is anybody else? Do we have any, any, any other strong interests?
You're nominating, Michelle?
Yes, yes, okay. All right, so I nominate Michelle, uh, to serve as the vice chair of the committee. Michelle has done a wonderful job as the chair and, um, is willing to continue to serve in a leadership role. And, uh, I think, you know, her experience, um, as the outgoing chair will be, uh, very important and invaluable to, uh, to me as I move into the chair position, so, um, so I, I, um, I nominate Michelle. Can I get a second?
DeLuca, second.
All right, great. And roll call votes. I guess we'll start our new roll call rotation, so I guess Durant will be first, we'll go through.
Durant, yes.
Thank goodness.
Okay, Nancy, do you want to go? Do you want to, I was thinking, yeah, maybe we'll, we'll just pick up, I drop O'Neal and then at the end, right? We'll stay in the same order? Okay, all right, great.
Michelle, did you already go?
Yes, I voted for me.
Okay. Okay, good.
DeLuca, yes.
Wise man, yes.
Starr, yes.
Loomis, yes.
All right, great. All right, thank you. So we've got our new order in place and, uh, our new, um, new chair and vice chair, all right. So, um, before we move on to the next item on the agenda, um, I understand that there was a request by one of our presenters to be moved up. It's a, uh, due to a scheduling conflict, so I make a motion to move item six, the vote to approve Yankee Sprinkler contract to the next item, um, on the agenda ahead of voting to approve minutes. So can I get a second on that motion?
Wise man, second.
And roll call vote.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wise man, yes.
Starr, yes.
Loomis, yes.
And Mr. Twombly?
Oh, thanks a lot for, uh, moving me up. I have a, um, meeting here in Harlem on the, uh, selection committee for a new town manager, so we have the first meeting tonight, so I appreciate, um, getting moved up on the, uh, school committee appointment on, on that particular, um, town manager appointment in Harlem. But anyways, back to the, uh, contract here, so I'm here in front of you for the Yankee Sprinkler contract. Um, as you may remember, a couple of years ago, we went to town meeting as a capital expense to replace all the sprinkler heads at, uh, on the second floor at Richardson Homestead School. So we went out to bid, we followed all the, uh, chapter thirty B procurement regulations. Uh, we put the bid on the goods and services bulletin, we posted it on the local newspaper, and we also posted it on Conbuys. Uh, we've got one bid from Yankee Sprinkler, unfortunately, although we are very familiar with Yankee Sprinkler, they do some work here in the school department on our sprinklers, they service them, so it was actually somewhat good that, um, we got Yankee because we're familiar with their work, uh, but obviously we would have liked to have some competition. Uh, the cost of the project is a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Uh, the, uh, the money that was appropriated at town meeting for the capital was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so the bid came in just a little bit below, uh, what we had estimated for the project, so. Uh, the plan is to start this project as soon as school ends, so probably right around June twentieth, and we hope to have the project done no later than August fourth. Obviously, we want to get this done before school starts in September. Uh, it's quite a, um, involved, uh, process because we had to have the vendor had to come in and actually measure all the, um, all the sprinkler heads that are on the second floor. So it's quite cumbersome and by getting the, uh, contract approved tonight, the vendor will be able to go out to procure those sprinkler heads and there's quite a lead time on that, so we're on a tight timeline, but, uh, with that, I will entertain any questions that the committee may have.
Okay, great, so any questions for Mr. Twombly? Seeing any? Okay, all right, great, well, thank you for the very succinct but thorough presentation.
I wanted to make sure I covered all the bases.
Yes, I think you, I think you preempted all of our questions, you know us well at this point, so.
I guess congratulations, Dr. Nada, you're going to be the new chair.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, all right, so, uh, so can I get a motion to approve the Yankee Sprinkler contract?
So move.
And a second?
DeLuca, second.
Okay, and roll call vote.
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wise man, yes.
Starr, yes.
Loomis, yes.
All right, great, thank you.
Thanks a lot, have a great night, everybody. Appreciate you wanting to move me up on the agenda.
No problem.
Take care, bye bye.
Thank you. Okay, all right, so next up on the agenda is approving the regular school committee meeting minutes from April sixth, twenty twenty-three. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or edits? Okay, so I'm not seeing any. And can I get, uh, a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from April sixth?
So move, DeLuca.
Second, Wise man.
And roll call vote?
Durant, yes.
DeLuca, yes.
Wise man, yes.
Starr, yes.
Loomis abstain.
All right, and then next is the executive session meeting minutes from Thursday, April sixth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, does anybody want to hold for review in executive session? Okay, so no comments, questions, or edits on these. Let's see, so can I get a motion to either approve and release at this time or approve and not release at this time?
DeLuca, move to not release, approve and not release at this time.
Okay, and can I get a second?
Durant, second.
Great, and roll call vote?
Durant, yes.
Luca, yes.
Wise man, yes.
Starr, yes.
Loomis abstain.
Okay, great. Alrighty, so then next up on the agenda is the eighty-four student movements twenty twenty-three outstanding chapter award. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you, I'm so excited to share this great news. You've heard the eighty-four students and advisors speak before you in the past, and I'm sure it comes as no surprise that they were recently honored. I would like to introduce them to you so that they might tell you about that honor. They're slowly coming over as presenters. Uh, the group has received the outstanding chapter award, and we have Kelly Reed from Eastern Wings of Hope here. We also, I believe, had, have Ed Rand from the eighty-four. See, Mrs. Kavanaugh, the principal of the high school. And we also have Eileen Gardner, nurse and advisor, nurse at the Eastern Middle School, and students Mia Zachos, Madeline Mc, uh, Madeline McMaxo, Anna Sierra, Rose Sedida, and Ava LeBree. Welcome, everyone, and please let me know if I've missed anyone. I believe that's everyone, and I will turn it over to Ms. Kavanaugh, Ms. Gardner, Ms. Reed, whoever would like to begin. We are very excited to hear about this and celebrate your accomplishment. And let me know as soon as you want me to present.
Congratulations, everybody. I will let, um, Ms. Reed and Ms. Gardner, um, present to you, uh, this amazing, um, achievement.
I think I am going to share it over to Mia.
Yes, sorry, this is Mrs. Gardner. Mia will start the presentation off.
Perfect, thank you. And do you want me to share my screen?
Yes.
That'd be great. Okay.
First, I'd like to just thank you all for giving us your time today, we really appreciate it. My name is Mia Zachos, I'm in eighth grade. I am a middle school ambassador for the eighty-four movement and part of the Eastern Middle School ninety-seven club, and I'm so happy to be able to speak to you all today about our outstanding chapter award. Um, next slide, please. So I'd like to just start off by introducing you all to the eighty, to the ninety-seven club. I'm sure you might have heard about it before, but, um, I'd just like to share a few new things. So according to our most recent health survey, ninety-seven percent of the students at our middle school do not smoke or vape, so this inspired us to rename our club from the eighty-four to the ninety-seven. I might accidentally say eighty-four a few times because it's still a bit new to me, but that is our new name. We currently have twenty-four members from grade eight to grade six, and we have been a part of the eighty-four movement for the past four years, and we're the first middle school chapter in the state to join the movement, so we're really proud of this. We engage students through our education and action, and we use the positive warmth approach to show the bright side of statistics. For example, earlier I said ninety-seven percent of the students do not smoke or vape. Instead of focusing on the three percent that do, we focus on the ninety-seven percent that do not, to kind of inspire that positive approach. This year, we identified mental health concerns as a root cause of many issues that we recognize in our own community, like bullying, substance abuse, and nicotine use. Mental health issues are a known risk factor for nicotine and substance abuse, so we've really focused on targeting the mental health issues in our community and trying to do everything we can to show support. So we meet one to two times a month to practice refusal skills and public speaking, along with addressing the health and wellness issues that we see in our own community. We'd like to thank Eastern Wings of Hope, Raising Multicultural Kids, YMCA, Sarah's Village, and the Town Recreation Department for collaborating with us and giving us so much support. Now I'll pass it off to Anna.
Hi, thank you so much for having us. Oh, you can go to the next slide. So our club recently won eighty-four's chapter of the year award, which was selected out of the twenty-five chapters in the Massachusetts eighty-four program. Our chapter's members, along with the advisors, Mrs. Gardner, Mrs. McCarthy, and Mrs. Erickson, continually show commitment to statewide and locally for meetings, along with Eastern Wings of Hope and our own club's meetings. We make sure to engage with adult and youth at all the attempts we attend. Our presence has been called strong, passionate, and vibrant in any space they are in. We are proud to be recognized as a strong group in the field of public health and tobacco prevention. Several of our members went to CADCA in DC in January in collaboration with Eastern Wings of Hope, who sponsored us. Senator Timmelti is a strong supporter of our club, and during the day that we won the chapter of the year, he gave us a private tour of the state house and gave us official citations in the senate chamber. You can go to the next slide. Um, so these are just, this is the slide that the eighty-four showed when, um, we won the award, so the top picture is the couple of students that went to DC, and the bottom one is when we had a group of kids at Frothingham at the children's races, and we gave out flyers and bands to promote health. You can go to the next slide. So a quote that the eighty-four gave about our club when we won the award is, "This chapter has shown so much commitment to attending statewide and local eighty-four chapter trainings amidst their busy schedules and always engages with youth and adult facilitators at every event they attend. Eastern Middle School's chapter is present is always strong, passionate, and vibrant in any space therein. We are so thankful to have them as an example of youth leadership and excellence in the field of tobacco prevention and public health." Congrats on Eastern Middle School on this award. And now I'll pass it on to Maddie. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Maddie. Um, so we're focusing on May mental health awareness month. We simply plan for a grant, um, to focus on more of an upstream approach of preventing mental health issues and substances abuse. So encouraging and identifying coping skills that everyone can use. So every Wednesday morning, we're going to have an announcement to this school, um, to encourage awareness and decrease stigma. Our students start reading every Wednesday. On May eleventh is Children's Health Day, so we'll be handing out green, 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 and racial handouts for lunch. And I'm grateful for having an afternoon school event with fun activities. Spreading art based on a green base paint and a mental meditation activity. And we'll also have decorative, 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 decorative. And we're also having counselors so that you can ask any questions about mental health. And we're having poster contests with a prize, um, for the winner to demonstrate how mentally healthy they are. And last, creating a bulletin board that has give what you need and take what you can, which is an interactive bulletin board with individual votes and statements, you can access or create them. And we'll have, we're going to have this kind of poster watch game, and they're supportive of spirituals. You can go to the next slide.
Mia, do you want to do this one?
Mia, do you want to do this one?
Sure, so we just like to give out a big... To EMS guidance, Mr. Carroll, Dr. Cabral, Mrs. Pruitt, Eastern Wings of Hope, Sarah's Village, and, oh, um, Oliver Ames High School, eighty-four, for supporting us. They're a huge supporters and really a main reason why our club has gone to where we are today. We look forward to continuing our work at Oliver Ames, like Ava and Kira. Thank you so much.
Wonderful job, thank you very much. Congratulations, well deserved.
Thank you, Dr. Cabral, and everybody here, this, um, you, you're all a big part of this, and, um, our OA, um, members actually started out in the middle school club, and I hope, Ms. Kavanaugh, you're going to see these girls up there with you. I like to, I tell them all the time, this is our farm team. And let me just tell you, they handled the gavel in the senate chambers like a parrow. Everyone got a turn, they did have to pry it from my hands, which, you know, I know none of you are shocked at that. And, um, they also met with the legislators and they, they gave very impassioned speeches to both Senator Timothy and the other representative's office, um, about how they could help the legislators in decreasing vape use and advertising gear towards you. And I, I wish I had taped it because it was impassioned and natural, and I actually, um, I sent a copy of the grant that they sent in, and the reason I did that, I wanted you to just read it because that was written by the students. Like, I smoothed out some of the edges, but that was written by them. And so honestly, they impressed me with each meeting that we have, and, um, they, they were chosen out of all the chapters. And like, we were the only people walking out, uh, I, I, one of the pictures was a big white citation. It was signed by, uh, Representative, um, Senate President Bron Mariano, and then Senator Timothy gave every single one of them their own citation. Like, we needed bags to carry out all our swag, it was pretty good, so.
I've talked to Senator Timothy a few times about the eighty-four, I have to say, he's also a fan, along with all of us. He is very impressed with this group.
Oh, he, he, he knows some of their names.
Yes, he does.
He does, so it was really cool. And we just like, you know, especially, you know, with Eastern Wings of Hope, um, they have sponsored buses to, like, the cost of fuel is ridiculous, and they actually were able to get us a bus to, um, go to a couple of the events. Um, and these students are attending them on their own time, not mostly during school hours, like, uh, we have two student leaders, uh, state leaders, Mia is one of them, and the other one is Eva Vieira, who's up at Oliver Ames High School. It's pretty rare to have, you know, two, you know, even one for that matter, and, um, they did an amazing job. And, um, I just wanted to thank you for the support for the programs.
Thank you for all you do, Ms. Gardner and Ms. Reed, as advisors as well. There is a tremendous amount of work involved. Uh, the students are, they clearly shine, but they can't do this without your guidance, so thank you for your work as well.
No problem, anytime, they are a hundred and ten percent worth it, and they know that. Great, okay, any, any questions or comments from the committee, Nancy?
So I have this on my school committee notes, so I can check this out now. But I do want to thank everybody involved, the students are amazing. When you go over to the high school next year in September, um, good luck and get as many kids involved as possible. And Mrs. Gardner, I hope that you have a crew waiting in the wings to, uh, get through your ninety-seven.
We know, we do, we have a... Yeah, we have a, and we actually have some gentlemen that we've dragged to our meetings. Uh, we took the feedback from school council and we've been heavily recruiting, so we have to get more SNAP money, that seems to work.
But, um, also, so again, thank you to everybody, Eastern Wings of Hope, amazing, the Breznerian family, amazing, and just girls, you did a terrific job, we're so proud of you.
Thank you, Nancy, anybody else have any questions or comments?
Can I actually say something?
Absolutely, yes.
So I, so congratulations, I've seen, um, you all present a couple times, and it's always such a privilege. You are so impressive, and you're amazing role models to the younger kids. I have a third grader, um, a boy, Mrs. Gardner, and I cannot wait until he comes and joins you. Um, he already, he wears his bracelet, he, he knows, you know, the eighty-four, no, ninety-seven, and, um, and I just wanted to let you know that I find you so impressive, and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren, okay, anybody else have any additional comments? So I, I don't have anything to add that hasn't already been said, uh, beautifully by, by Nancy and Lauren, and said to you in the past, we, we, you know, you've, every time you come before us, um, I leave with a little bit of hope, a little bit more hope for, uh, for the future of health and wellness, uh, mental health, uh, all of that. I just can't thank you, uh, thank you all enough for the work that you're doing in this area. And, um, and, and I think, you know, it's making a difference and will continue to make a difference, so good job and thank you for all that you do.
Okay. Thank you for being here tonight as well.
All right, yes, thank you for presenting, and congratulations again, well, well, well deserved. Okay, all right, so I guess, uh, Mrs. Kavanaugh will stay on to present our next, um, agenda item, which is the student event dates.
Yep, Mrs. Kavanaugh is going to review some of the important senior dates, uh, for the public, but also for the school committee and be able to answer any questions you might have. Ms. Kavanaugh?
Thank you, thank you for having me, I'm really excited. This is a, a really busy but a really exciting time of year for us at the high school because it's filled with events to celebrate all of our students, but particularly our seniors who are graduating. So the senior events calendar, um, went out, um, in draft form to families several months ago so they could start planning their calendars for the spring. It was right around, um, the holidays that that went out, and then the final one went out to families just recently with, um, everything confirmed in terms of dates and times and who attends every event. As you know, we have a pretty robust, um, series of events for seniors that we host every, um, April, May, and June. So you should, you believe you have copies of this, correct? It's going to be very similar to last year. Um, we started the whole thing off this today with the Day of Kindness, which went amazingly well, and I, I can't, I just need to take a moment, if you don't mind, to extend my sincerest gratitude to the Ness family and to Cindy Hall for the organization that goes into this, as well as my, um, secretary Peggy Crowley, who does so much of the background work to get every student in a space for community service. And then it's amazing how the town comes out and, um, how charitable and help-giving. I'm just so impressed and truly, um, you know, honored that the town spends, um, so much time creating a space for our students to do community service and then donating food and drinks for them, um, to have a cookout afterwards. So it's really quite an amazing day, and I think every single student took a moment to remember Devon Ness today and, um, be reminded of why we do this work, which is in his honor as somebody who was truly dedicated to, um, to the community and to, uh, supporting others through service and kindness, um, so. So that was today, it was great, it was well, uh, very well received by all the...
Is why, by the way, we're all attending school committee in t-shirts. I assure you, they are Day of Kindness t-shirts.
Yeah, exactly.
It's not, you know, casual Friday or anything over here.
So, um, we have several awards ceremonies. The first is very student-run, that's our Oscar night, which is on May twelfth. Um, that's where the students present their superlatives like you would see in any other televised, uh, awards show. They do a great job of that, and it's typically just attended by students, we do have some parents that attend. The Temple Awards Night, which is our music awards night, followed by our senior prom, or the week after that. This year, we have some of our highest attendance actually to senior prom that we've had in a long time, we're really excited. We have over, um, well over three hundred students attending, that includes guests, but last year our numbers were in the low two hundred, so a lot of our, and the number of guests hasn't gone up, so a lot of our current seniors are attending this year, which is great to see.
And Kavanaugh, if I can just throw in there, uh, one of our school committee members was kind enough to let me know about this, and so I just want to publicly say, and maybe you can pass it on at the high school, we have a lot of photo op opportunities at places like Queeset or the Oliver Ames Estate, and I've recently discovered, uh, because I've just been looking at it in a different way, but somebody brought to my attention that our sensory courtyard over here in Blanch Ames Elementary School has some beautiful backdrops, and so people may want to consider that for, I know it's too late for senior pictures, but any kind of prom pictures or anything like that with the stonework and the natural siding and the timber, it, it, and the plantings, it's really stunning as a background, so. I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you, yeah, and I hope any senior parents who are up there watching consider that. It is very much a tradition here at Oliver Ames before any event where students dress up that they gather outside in our beautiful landscape around the town to take pictures, and that's a great addition to the list. Um, so this year, the seniors' last day of classes is May twenty-second, which is a Monday, and that, um, and that has their senior send-off, so that's a, uh, an ice cream social and yard games we have outside for them, and then we have a tradition... And then we have a tradition of all the seniors gathering in the atrium. And we take a big, you know, bird's eye view shot of them, and then they count down to their last day, and we're not at the building together. It's one of my favorite days of the year. It's a great time to celebrate them. So following that, we have our monogram awards night. That's the evening that is dedicated to our athletics program run by Ms. Slaven and Mr. Gordy. And then seniors have their final exam scheduled the week after. The next week is followed by many meetings and rehearsals to get ready for class night and graduation. The students have a Boston Harbor Boat Cruise, which is at lunch again this year, the same as last year, where we'll bus them into Boston for the harbor cruise. The student council has an awards night as well, which is for all grades, nine through twelve. D-class, the student activities advisors and leaders nominate students who should be recognized for their work in those clubs and activities. And then we're going to do the Senior March of Schools again. That's on May thirty-first. So our seniors will dress up in their cap and gown. After their rehearsal, they'll walk through each of the buildings. This is the first time we'll do it at Blanch Ames, so I'm really excited about that.
No buses necessary this year.
I know. We'll walk everywhere, which is, which is great. And I think one of the most, the best parts of this, this trip is you see the students connect with their kindergarten teacher, their third grade teacher, you know, their EMS teachers, and those moments where the teachers get to see how the hard work and effort they put into them when they were in their grade level has led to their graduation, and the students get to kind of show off to them, and what they've achieved is one of the best moments of that event. We then have class night, which you all know is the scholarship night. And followed by that is our graduation. So the graduation's going to be the same as last year. We'll start setup on Friday night. We'll have the graduation at, at Frampton Ham Park at ten AM on Saturday morning. So that was, you know, a pretty quick ride through what, what the senior events look like at our school. Do you guys have any, any questions or anything that you need clarified?
Nope, not seeing any.
Okay.
All right.
I'm looking forward to seeing you all at the events, and you know you're welcome to everything, but there are, and I think you guys know there are certain events where we like to highlight your amazing contributions to helping our students get across that stage on graduation day and have you seated up on stage. So I look forward to connecting with all of you at those events.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
All right. So next up, let's see, we have a retirement. Let's see, so Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. We have the retirement of an Eastern Middle School paraprofessional, Donna Wilbur. She is joining us this evening. She, from what I understand, will not be coming over to this side of the screen. But she is here, if you'd like to address her. Donna was hired in nineteen ninety-four as a lunch playground aide at Center School. And in nineteen ninety-nine, she was transferred to what was then the Richardson School. In two thousand, she was appointed to the position of paraprofessional at Eastern Junior High School, which of course is now the middle school. She's been with the district for twenty-nine years, and she is looking to retire in June of this year. Once again, I am very excited to congratulate Donna, wish her very many happy, healthy years of retirement. I most recently saw her at the National Junior Honor Society at the middle school. And if I may say, I saw a little pep in her step, not saying it's related to the fact that she's retiring soon, but she's always been very pleasant and very positive, but certainly wish her the very best in her retirement.
All right. And is this when I read the letter?
Yes.
One of my past chairs, not, all right. So, "To whom it may concern, as of June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, I will be officially retiring from Eastern Public Schools. I have been with the Eastern schools since two thousand. I've enjoyed my time as a paraprofessional during that time, but feel it is time to retire. Thank you, Donna Wilbur." Okay, so does anybody have any, any comments or well wishes before we move to vote? Nancy?
Yes, of course I do. You know that. So, I'm sorry, stop crying. Donna is awesome. She's so helpful, so kind to everybody. You know, the kids that she works with, she makes a big difference to them, but also to the professionals around her. She's got three daughters and her grandchildren, so I hope she enjoys retirement with her grandchildren. And Donna, you are going to love being retired. Just know it takes like a year to get used to it, that's all. But y'all are going to have some fun. And congratulations. We're going to, we're sad to see you go.
Great. Thank you, Nancy. Does anybody else want to speak?
So I say, Donna, I don't, I don't know that, I know you personally, but I certainly know of you and, and have just heard really wonderful things about you over the years and just know how big a part of the schools you have been and how big your presence has been and how much your students appreciate. So thank you for all of your years of service. That's a tremendous amount of time to be, to be in such an important role where you make a huge difference in the day-to-day lives of the kids that you serve. So thank you for your service.
Okay, so I will make a motion to accept the retirement of Donna Wilbur with regret. Can I get a second?
Deluca, second.
And roll call vote.
Durant, yes.
Deluca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes.
Uma, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Congrats, Donna. Congrats. Enjoy your, enjoy your retirement. Okay, so next up on the agenda is the vote to approve National Teachers' Day proclamation. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. This year, it's a little different. Usually, National Teachers' Day falls during National Teacher Appreciation Week. This way, this is a little different this week. So National Teachers' Day is May second, National Teacher Appreciation Week, or as we say here in Eastern, educator appreciation, because all of our providers, they may not call themselves teacher. They may call themselves speech pathologist or school adjustment counselor, but they're all teachers. And so we appreciate and are so grateful for every single one of them. And so every year, we put out a proclamation. We post it in every school and here in Central Office, and it's read here, and that is the National Teachers' Day proclamation. Typically, that is read, and then you vote to approve it, and then it's signed and we post.
All right, great. So proclamation, National Teacher Day, May second, twenty twenty-three, and National Teacher Appreciation Week, May eighth to twelve, twenty twenty-three. Whereas teachers open children's minds to the magic of ideas, knowledge, and dreams. And whereas teachers continuously refine their skills to enhance their instructional effectiveness. And whereas teachers work collaboratively with other staff to create effective and safe schools. And whereas teachers are more than instructional leaders. They fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, caregivers, and mentors who significantly impact the lives of children. And whereas teachers work with parents and the community to support children. And whereas all educators have risen to the occasion during times of crisis to provide academic, social, emotional, and physical support to children and their families. Now therefore, to honor all teachers and all educators who serve, who deserve the utmost respect and adulation for all the contributions they continuously make to Eastern Public Schools, especially during these unprecedented times. The Eastern School Committee and the Superintendent of Schools proclaims the May second, twenty twenty-third National Teacher Appreciation Day and May eighth to twelve, twenty twenty-three National Teacher Appreciation Week. Okay, so before we vote, does anybody have any questions or comments on the proclamation? Seeing none? Okay, so can I get a vote to approve the National Teachers' Day and Week proclamation?
So move, Deluca.
Okay, in a second.
Second, Durant.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, and roll call vote. Durant, yes.
Deluca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes.
Uma, yes.
Great.
I just would add that it's a perfect opportunity. Every day of the year is, but it's a perfect opportunity for people to reach out and express their appreciation. Honestly, it's just like moms with macaroni necklaces. Doesn't need to be anything big or huge. Just a sentiment of thanks and appreciation goes a long way. I mean, food's also good, but appreciation goes a long way. And so please reach out, just take a moment, and reach out to those who are doing such an amazing job with our kids every single day.
Thank you. All right, so next item on the agenda is the vote to approve the School Nurses' Day proclamation. So, Dr. Cabral?
May tenth is National School Nurse Day, and this is also a proclamation for you to vote on, sign, and we will post. Similarly, I would ask that people reach out to their school nurses as well. You can imagine how busy and crazy a nursing office is every day, whether it's with the littles or the bigs. There's always something going on. So please make sure you reach out and express your appreciation any time of the year, but certainly it's especially poignant during this time of the year. And you have a proclamation?
Yes. So proclamation, National School Nurse Day, May tenth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas students are the future, and by investing in them today, we are ensuring our world for tomorrow. And whereas families deserve to feel confident that their children will be cared for when they are at school. And whereas all students have a right to have their physical and mental health needs safely met while in the school setting. And whereas students today face more complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school. And whereas school nurses have served a critical role in improving public health and in ensuring students' academic success for more than one hundred and twenty years. And whereas school nurses address the home and community factors, for example, social determinants that impact students' health. And whereas student nurses are professional nurses that advance the well-being, academic success, and lifelong achievements of all students by serving on the front lines and providing a critical safety net for our nation's most fragile children. And whereas school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, families, and healthcare providers on behalf of children's health by promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our nation's children. And whereas school nurses support the health and educational success of children and youth by providing access to care when children's cognitive development is at its peak. And whereas school nurses are members of school-based teams, for example, School Health Services, Bible Four IEP, disaster emergency planning, providing care coordination to address the school population. And whereas school nurses understand the link between health and learning, they're in a position, and are in a position to make a positive difference for children every day. Therefore, be it resolved that the National Association of School Nurses celebrates and acknowledges the accomplishments of school nurses everywhere and their efforts to meet the needs of today's students by providing and advocating for quality, student-centered care, and offers gratitude for the nation's school nurses who contribute to our local communities by supporting students to stay healthy, in school, safe, and ready to learn, and keeping parents and guardians at work, not just on this National School Nurses' Day, but in every opportunity throughout the year. Now therefore, the Eastern School Committee and the Superintendent of Schools do hereby proclaim Wednesday, May tenth, twenty twenty-three, as School Nurse Day. Okay. So any questions or comments on the proclamation? Seeing none? Can I get a vote to approve School Nurses' Day, sorry, a motion to, to approve the School Nurses' Day proclamation?
Wiseman, so moved.
And second?
Durant, second?
You, all right, and roll call vote.
Durant, yes.
Deluca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes.
Uma, yes.
Okay, great. All right. So next up on the item is the discussion and vote on subcommittee assignments. So, Dr. Cabral, do you want to kick off anything here?
Sure. Just for the public's information, due to the turnover in the school committee, Caroline O'Neil, who has left the school committee, of course, was involved in so many really wonderful subcommittees as part of her incredible service. And so what we need to do now is just replace her seat on the following committees. Fee, the naming subcommittee, the school planning committee as the school committee representative, and the town budget subcommittee. There are, of course, remaining subcommittees that are reviewed every year, but we'll do those later in May.
Great, thank you. So our understanding from, from working with the, with the town clerk's office is that we will be filling these four roles through the end of this fiscal year. And then we will look at all of the assignments in a future meeting between now and June thirtieth to look at all the subcommittee assignments beginning July one. So this, these assignments right now are just going to be through June thirtieth, if that helps with any of the decision-making process here. So, so if you, if you, if you volunteer or are nominated for one of these roles, it's not for the rest of your life. It's just, just a couple of months. Nancy?
So Jen, on fee, there was actually talk that we only need one representative from school committee on fee. The group has changed a bit in its outlook on things, not its outlook, but the way it's run. So that one, I will stay on fee, and Caroline does not need to be replaced on that committee.
Okay. Thank you for that, for that insight.
And then if I can continue, on the naming subcommittee, we would like to ask Lauren if she would like to take Caroline's place on the naming subcommittee. And actually, Caroline is going to be a member of that committee as a towns person.
All right, so I guess we can vote, I think, the whole thing through. But Lauren, do you have any, any comments on the naming subcommittee specifically?
No.
Or objections?
No objections.
That's a lot.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Okay, great. And then the school planning committee. So Jackie, do you want to speak to that and offer any suggestions here?
So we were wrapping things up. Right now, the plan is just to have two more meetings, one in May and one in June. So it's really up to the committee whether you want to appoint somebody else. It's not really necessary. I don't think there are going to be any major votes going forward. But it's, you know, whatever, whatever people want to do about that.
Are, is the school planning committee, is there, even though there's not much work happening in the next couple, you know, before now and the end of the year, and then the status after that is, is something to be determined as well, right? Because we're nearing the end of the project. Is there, is there a requirement to have somebody remain appointed?
So I know Danielle Siccar, the town clerk, had contacted Mr. Twombly about this, and she didn't, from her email, it appeared that she didn't think it needed to be. She's away this week, so I can double-check with her when she gets back, just to confirm and see if it's a necessity or not. I'm guessing because it's winding up, it's not going to be. But I will definitely double-check with her when she gets back.
Okay. Okay, does anybody else have any thoughts or comments on the school planning committee? No, okay. And then the town budget subcommittee again, Jackie, where you are the remaining appointee. Any thoughts on that?
We definitely need a school committee member.
There is no doubt about that. And I mean, Jen, I know you're, you're so over busy these days, but based on your background and your job, and this is what you do for a living, I would really love to have you on that committee if you're able.
Okay, yeah, I think it's, I think it's a natural fit for what I do professionally and for my work on the audit committee. And, you know, I know as we go through and look at things for appointment beginning in July, there could maybe be some more opportunities to, to spread things out a little bit more evenly. But I think in the interim, these, this feedback certainly makes sense. And the budget subcommittee is something that definitely fits within my wheelhouse. I'd be happy to take on.
Okay, so does anybody have any other questions or comments then before we, let's see, before we vote on these four subcommittee assignments or lack thereof for a couple of them?
The only thing I need to say is for the town budget subcommittee, you do need to go get sworn in at town hall.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. And Jackie, are there any meetings up, are there, is there upcoming current work for that?
No, there's, there's nothing, unless I'm forgetting something, Leisha, I don't think, because we have town meeting coming up. So usually from right before town meeting and then there's a lull until you're getting ready to go back. Um, so it would probably be a few months before we even have a meeting.
Okay. Okay. Alrighty then, um, so I make a motion to assign, let's see, so I make a motion for the four subcommittee assignments to be as follows. Fee, Nancy will remain and we are not replacing Caroline based on feedback on the needs of that committee, that subcommittee. Um, let's see, the naming subcommittee, we will be adding Lauren Lumis. Um, the school planning committee, we will, uh, leave Caroline's spot vacant, um, given the status of that committee. And then on the town budget committee, we'll replace Caroline with myself. Okay, so that motion, uh, can I get a second?
Wiseman's second.
And roll call vote?
Durant's yes.
Luca yes.
Wiseman yes.
Star yes?
Lumis yes.
Great. All right. So next up item on the agenda is the discussion of the Animal Assistive Therapy Policy File, I M G A, first reading. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. So we have this wonderful policy and I have to tell you, it's actually served as a model for several districts in the Commonwealth. Uh, so there's not much wrong with it. The only issue, uh, right now is on page three, uh, it, it, for those of you who may remember when we put this policy in place several years ago, we had, um, specifically a speech pathologist who was looking to have a therapy animal in the schools to assist with, uh, social behaviors and, um, reading to the dog to improve speech and articulation. And so the policy was created, but on page three, um, excuse me, is it page three? No, it's on page two of the policy. Um, you can see where it says creation of an oversight committee. In there, in several places, speech pathology, speech language pathology program and pathologist is listed. And so, um, I think this is not a substantive change. I just would like to uh, eliminate those words and instead put handler, only because with the changes in the mental health needs that we have, we're finding that there's a lot of benefit to having therapy assisted, uh, therapy assisting animals in areas like, uh, adjustment counselor centers or guidance centers. I can't say we have plans to add a huge amount of these, but we did have a therapist or counselor who was interested in this and, uh, wanted to follow the policy to have their dog brought in and it, and it did. Maybe, I'm sure it was unintentional, but it, it does specify speech pathologist. And I can see the potential increase in the need of this. Uh, Bristol County Sheriff's Office is even actually working with many school districts right now to bring their dogs in for de-escalation strategies, uh, after, after a crisis, um, to really help students with that. So we just want to make sure that this is, uh, clearly for, um, the, the rest of it is perfectly fine. It's very clear what its intention and use is. We just want to eliminate those words. The only other thing that I wanted to clarify here, we do have this oversight committee, but there is nothing here that says that, like we did last time, uh, any of the animals that may join the school system need to come before the school committee itself and not the oversight committee. You would obviously be notified if that happened, but I just wanted to clarify and make sure, since we were making that small language change, to see if that was something you wanted to be part of the policy, that the handler would need to come before the school committee that you may need or you may want to ask questions or even vote on whether they can bring the animal in as part of your policy. So, uh, those are just the only two issues that I wanted to bring up with this particular, um, policy.
Okay. So do any, any members have any questions for Dr. Cabral or comments?
I also just want to remind you that policy readings have to be done twice. So this is a first reading. If you wanted to digest, ask any clarifying questions, come back and just, you know, you could discuss now, of course. But I just don't want you to feel as though you're pressured to make a vote this evening. Um, we, we don't have anything in the wings waiting. This is not exactly time-sensitive. Uh, but I just wanted to remind you that with policies, it's two readings anyway.
Are you, are you talking about the language on the creation of the oversight committee, the fourth bullet point?
Yes.
Okay. So what would you want it to say? At the regular meetings, the oversight committee shall review the overall results of the program by examining whether there are the small groups.
Within the program.
Within the program, okay. Within the program are achieving the pre-established.
Exactly.
Criteria.
Yes.
The A A T is only a tool if the.
If the handler is not achieving the group's goal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I do have a question. I, I see that the committee is, um, is on our overall committee list as, as inactive. Um, but there is, the second bullet here states that the committee would have two regularly scheduled meetings each year. So do we need to activate and assign somebody to that? Okay.
We do currently have the same dog that this policy was actually created because of, and so we need to keep that going.
Okay. Are there any meetings scheduled for the remainder of the school year, or is this something we can address with our next batch of committee assignments?
We can do it with the next batch of committee assignments. I would just add it to that list. Yep.
Okay. Okay, great. All right. Uh, anybody else have any questions or comments for Dr. Cabral on this item? Okay, great, thank you. And then the next item is also, uh, policy. This is the discussion of enrollment of students based on residence, residency. Policy file J F dash E dash three, first reading.
Yes, this one's a little more complex. Uh, so the policy you have in front of you, you is not your current policy. That's a, a prior policy. We actually have two policies that are related to residency. One is, is basically about kindergarten, so that's fine as it is. The other is, um, policy J C A, assignment of students to schools. It is very broad and it, it does allow us to do a, a lot of things that we have done. For example, it states, there are really only three things under this. It states that if, uh, somebody is not a resident of Easton, they can't attend the schools unless, number one, the change involves an exceptional child hardship case or there are medical considerations, which I have been asked to consider and have done in the past. Uh, number two, if the change appears to be in the best interest of the child, of the schools, and for disciplinary and administrative reasons. So, for example, if, uh, a student is two months from finishing the school year, they are involved in several services, um, they are not very amenable to transition and we feel like this is going to be a problem for the child, we might let them finish the school year, something like that. And number three, if the legal residence of the child changes from one attendance, uh, area to another during the school, during the school year and the parent wishes to remain in the former school, which really is only, was only applicable uh, when we had the three small elementary schools. So that one really is not applicable anymore. That would be if someone was in the second grade at Moreau Hall and they moved to the Parkview District, for example. And so that, that one's, uh, moot at this point, so I would ask that you delete that one. But also, the reason I provided the former policy is because, again, since we're making s- a, a, a sort of a minor change here, there were a couple of things that I wanted to just get some guidance on due to some recent events. So in the policy, you have former policy J F E three, enrollment of students based on residence. The third paragraph down, uh, excuse me, now that we have a residence, a residency officer, and I have to tell you, that has been an extremely successful program. Uh, we, of course, hate to exclude anyone from our district, but it is our, it is our legal and our moral obligation to the taxpayers of Easton to monitor who is enrolled in the district and to be sure that only tax-paying residents are, uh, part of the public schools. And so, uh, the third paragraph down actually states that a violation can result in full restitution of tuition. Um, we have had several cases, uh, the second half of last year and this year so far, uh, due to our residency officer, we've, we've actually saved several times over what we're paying that residency officer, which, uh, we proposed would be the case. It's actually more than we anticipated. Uh, however, it doesn't say anywhere in our current policy that we have a residency officer or that there is a repercussion, uh, if this happens. And, um, unfortunately, what we're finding is people will sometimes go to great lengths to obscure the fact that they aren't a resident, providing false documentation, providing false testimony and the like. And so this, I just feel, is, uh, more transparent in terms of what can happen. Uh, they're often shocked when I tell them that by law we can charge them tuition. And I think it is important, and back tuition, so they would have to leave the district and pay back tuition. Um, so I would ask that that paragraph be considered to be put back into the policy. And then just the other, the numbered items here, just to go over those quickly. Number one, I, I actually wouldn't recommend. Number one said that a child who was in temporary residence could, uh, be authorized to attend and pay tuition. We're not a school choice district. We're not a school choice district on purpose. And I think that that is a bit, uh, contradictory to your intention of not being a school choice district. So I wouldn't necessarily recommend we put that back, that you certainly could consider it if you wanted to. Number two is foreign exchange students. Uh, we do have students who, uh, we haven't since COVID, but we hope to begin it again. We, as much as we like to encourage global experiences for our students to participate in foreign exchange or travel, it's just as valuable for them to spend the year with a student who's coming from another country. And we've had really great positive experiences with established organizations like A F S, for example. We don't have anything in the policy that necessarily addresses that. And number two does address that. We do require that they are approved and endorsed by the Council on Standards for International Education Travel. Um, I do think the wording is appropriate, um, and it would satisfy that need. So I would just ask you to consider, excuse me, consider reinstituting that one. The thing that I particularly like about that is that as it continues on the next page, it makes it clear that the family that's hosting the student is responsible for making sure that they have everything they need in terms of immigration or visas and, um, that they pay for all the students' fees and so forth. It just reduces a little bit of confusion there. For homeless students, that actually, if you look down at the bottom of the page, that references the McKinney-Vento Homeless Asses- uh, Assistance Act that isn't in our current policy. I would suggest we move that back into our current policy. It is, of course, something that we do follow, but it isn't noted in the policy. Number four, that's purely for your consideration. I don't have a recommendation either way. This is very rare. We were asked once to do this, but it's extremely rare. I don't know if you want to go down this, this path. But it does give the school committee the opportunity to engage with another school system to pay for a student to come in. But again, that seems very much like, uh, number one, where you're allowing somebody to temporarily come in for tuition, so I wouldn't necessarily suggest that. I wouldn't necessarily recommend that one. As far as number five, completion of the school, senior year and the end of school year, I really feel as though the number one and two of our current policy really gives latitude for that. So I don't necessarily think it's necessary to bring those back. Okay, so just as, as a way of a, a quick summary, uh, I would s- suggest that you consider reinstituting paragraph three, any person who violates that paragraph, that you would consider reinstituting number two on foreign exchange students, number three on homeless students. And if you want to entertain the others, that's certainly up to you. I would recommend just those. Jackie?
Um, so Lynn, if you want to send me that, um, what is it? J C A, the one we have now, um, after this conversation, we decide what we want to add back in. I can just do a draft of that policy, um, and send it back to you to include for the next school committee meeting for people to look at if you want me to.
Okay, I did add it to the packet, but it was just before the meeting.
All right, I can print that out then. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Does anybody else have any questions, comments? I'm wondering, so I think, I think several of you were on the committee in twenty seventeen when the new policy was voted on. Um, does anybody recall why some of these provisions were, were dropped? I know, I know I'm asking you to get in your time machine for six years.
Yeah, it's probably, you know, um, M A S C went through and our policy manual and they kind of added stuff, they took stuff out and we, we keep starting to go through and trying to see, because there have been other policies that they took out that we wanted to put back in. And so it's, it, there wasn't always a reason why they took things out. Sometimes they took it out because they felt it was repetitive or it didn't match their policy or, I can't tell you the exact reason for that.
Okay, so it wasn't something, though, that anybody recalls being a subject of intense debate and, and uh, you know, we must do this or that. Okay, great, thank you. All right. So thank you, thank you, Dr. Cabral, for that. So next up is a vote to approve the school improvement plan schedule. Dr. Cabral?
Okay, so, uh, annually, of course, we review the school improvement plans that are done by the school administration with the, um, school council of, of each of the respective schools. And we are presenting these dates for your consideration for Blanch, Ames, and Richardson, Olmsted to present their school improvement plan on May twenty-fifth and for the middle school and high school to present their plans on June eighth.
Any comments or questions from the committee on this?
Just on the, on the June eighth meeting, um, this, that's fine that middle school and the high school go, but um, if possible, let's see if we can keep the rest of the agenda shortened, because we're already going to be starting later on June eighth. And just, just, you know, some of us need our sleep. I'm, I'm only kidding.
Noted, Lynn. Noted, right, Lynn?
Well, and we know how, we know how the EMS one usually goes, so that's always a little long.
They're very informative and very welcome, but very long.
I did, and I, and I really love that, these are my, some of my favorite things about being on school committee is listening to the presentations. Um, the print, the administrators are so excited about their schools and the, um, the councils have done such a good job with it. And I don't want to deter anybody, but I just.
Exactly.
You know, I just, I, I don't want to take away anything from them. Do you know what I mean?
Sure. We can limit other items. We understand.
If, if, if we can, if we can't, then we have a long meeting. That's all there to it. I mean, it's not, you know, it's fine. Just making that suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Any other comments or questions?
My second Nancy's comment.
Michelle.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve the school improvement plan schedule as presented. Can I get a second?
So Luca's second.
Okay, and roll call vote?
Durant's yes.
Luca yes.
Wiseman yes.
Star yes?
Lumis yes.
Look how natural that is already. Boom, 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 boom.
All right. So next item on the agenda is. All right, so next item on the agenda is public comments. And Chrissy, I believe we have one?
Yes, we do. From Caroline O'Neill, 137 Blackbrook Road. Congratulations to veteran member Michelle Durant on her recent reelection. And to Lauren Loomis on her first time election to the Easton School Committee. I'm confident that the two of you working alongside your three outstanding colleagues will accomplish great things.
Misty Caroline.
Glad you're watching.
She's a lot in the punishment though.
Great, and there are, there are no others, right?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Okay, so we can move on then to superintendent notes.
Okay, oh gosh. In light of Nancy's comment, I hate to tell you, I have several. I'll, I'll talk quickly.
Dr. Cabral.
I'll talk quickly, it's okay.
We're only at 6:10. We're only going here an hour and 10 minutes. We're great.
Oh, well then.
We're doing great. Go for it.
All right, I'll go for it. So uh, I will say, you know, we are hoping in terms of the Blanche Ames Elementary School, we are now shooting for an August open house. So we are very excited to start planning that for everyone. Um, we're looking at um, a, a day portion for children to just run around and go crazy and do what they're supposed to do in an elementary school and have fun. And an evening, more adult community oriented uh, event where people can go through the building. And what we're hoping is really see the potential for their group or themselves or uh, use for community members. But it's just not something we're used to in Easton, using our early elementary schools for the functions that we use our other schools for. And so we're, we're hoping people see the spaces and realize just really how amenable they would be to a plethora of activities. Um, in the meantime, we have been very thrilled to take several districts through the building. We've had um, Berkeley, Situwick, Holliston. Uh, we just have had a lot of people call us. They're in some earlier stages of a building project and they kind of want to get some ideas and they are always blown away. And it's very validating and exciting to see. And so we welcome them. We remember when it was us and people gave us the opportunity to go and get really great ideas. And so uh, we really believe it's our turn to pay it forward and we're very happy to have them in the building. But it is super exciting to he- to hear and see educators in particular um, talk about the spaces and be really impressed by all the foresight and collaboration that's gone into everything. So um, we've been doing that. I am happy to say that we do have a bu- bu- my goodness, balanced budget with the town. And we, the Easton Public Schools right now are set for a 3% operational increase next year and some capital um, items. We are, uh, of course, that is all contingent upon, um, that is contingent upon, um, town meeting.
Worded town meeting.
What is that? Oh yeah, I'm having word recall issues. Sorry about that.
Worded town meeting.
Yeah, thank you. Together we'll get through it Nancy, thank you. Uh, getting through town meeting and a successful vote at town meetings.
You told me before.
So we are certainly hopeful about that. We hope people will turn out and vote and hear um, what we are proposing, not only for that, but we have some capital needs that have gone forward and also some very exciting CPC endorsed programs that we are looking for the town to approve. Uh, one is some very exciting outdoor spaces between and around uh, Richardson Olmsted and the middle school. And the other is the outdoor tennis courts, basketball courts and pickleball courts at all of our aims. And again, they've been en- endorsed and approved by both the finance committee and the CPC. And now it's going forward to town meeting and we're very excited to start a new project, right? When this one's finishing. I don't know what's going on. Okay. Uh, we are, a couple of things that, um, governmentally that's been going on. Uh, we have been, or I've spoken recently to Representative Carol Doherty. She had asked for some priorities that we have in the district. I did say that after these projects, we're moving very seriously on to, or currently working on uh, some security improvements at schools that I've talked to you about. And she has successfully gotten an earmark of $50,000 to go toward those projects that has passed the House. It does go to the Senate now, so it needs to pass through the Senate, but we are uh, exceedingly grateful for her efforts on our behalf. Also, I have invited Sen- Senator Timblety and he has accepted uh, to come to an area superintendent meeting here that I'll host at the Blanche Ames Elementary School. So that we can share our legislative priorities with him. As you know, Connor Reed, town administrator, and I have sent those forward to our delegation. But we like to repeat that and repeat it often and in person. And so uh, he graciously is coming to hear us once again. And now that the House budget is moving to the Senate, it is uh, the perfect timing to have those kind of conversations. We were just also notified, we have had uh, the last two years, we've had interns from Merrimack and from Stonehill. Last year, however, uh, sorry, three years. So we had Stonehill interns. Last year we, uh, this year, we have Merrimack interns. Stonehill, unfortunately, their program didn't have any candidates in it for them to vet to school departments. So that was uh, a bummer, but they just notified us that they do have uh, candidates for next year. So both of those programs, they, they allow us to vet the candidates before we, we take them into the district. They work with us year long. They um, get a stipend of up to $20,000 and they, for us, they frankly serve as another staff member. Um, pre-service or graduate level education student who is in the system. In fact, right now, we're, we're hiring one as a long-term sub and might become a permanent employee because um, she just had such a successful experience in one of our schools as a Merrimack intern. So next year, we're hoping to have both Merrimack and Stonehill again. Those are being paid for out of grants right now, so we're not sure how long that can continue. But while it's here, we're definitely happy to take advantage of it. It's been really great. We also have plans for two things to happen for next school year that we're currently working on. One is a brand new website. We're realizing that people are really utilizing that more than anything else to get their information. Ours, I can say, is not the best and it's not very user friendly, especially on our end to post things. So it's a huge endeavor. There's a lot of data on there. We're going to have landing spots for each school as well as for, excuse me, central administration and some of our bigger departments. And we hope that that will be going live in September. We're, we're getting a lot of drone shots and photographs and headshots and all kinds of fancy schmancy things, but the whole point is to really um, fortify our line of communication with the public, future employees, parents, students, and so on. The other is that we're going to be bringing, now that we are on campus, central office on campus, we're going to be bringing central registration together. Many, many districts do this. We've always had people come to central administration to verify their residency, go to the school. If they had more than one student, they went to multiple schools. Sometimes they went to the school first, so then they would come to central, then they'd go back to the schools. It really wasn't very user friendly. Doing it here will make sure that it's done the same way in every school, except for uh, the obvious um, anomalies like kindergarten has a little more information, high school has a little different information. But we are working on improving the process, making it electronic and making it happen one-stop shopping here at central office. Um, they will still have to go to schools for medical information, but it'll be so much more streamlined for people. We're finding that, uh, especially people who, um, as we're increasing our um, number of multilingual students in the district. We have parents who are really trying to navigate the language on their own and they're having difficulty bouncing to many different places. So we really think this is going to be a much better level of service. Also, on May 3rd, we're working with the RMK. We have a DEI Community Forum, Diversity Equity and Inclusion. It's going to be at Blanche Ames at 6:30. Uh, it's an opportunity for people to hear what are the initiatives we're doing uh, in our district. How are we looking to coordinate them? What are our long and short-term goals? And also for us to hear about the experiences of people in the district. So it's open to everyone and we're hoping that people will attend. I also was going to mention Day of Kindness, of course, that was all, all, already brought up and I'm sure somebody else will, but uh, just every single year, and I'm sure it's not just because they're not in school that day. But, I mean, they're down in the weeds and doing backbreaking work and shoveling mulch and everything else. And they have the biggest smiles on their faces. They're very positive. Everyone's in a good mood. Um, I'm taking pictures of them. They're not even thinking that's weird. They're just like so amenable and happy. And thankfully, we had good weather today. We got it in before the rain and it just is an amazing tribute to Devin and his work ethic and hard work and sense of kindness. And we're very happy to, to have been able to carry on that tradition again this year. Told you I had many things. I don't know why. Uh, even though the next school committee meeting is on the 11th, which is before town meeting, I just wanted to take the opportunity to remind people about town meeting. On May 15th at Oliver Ames High School in the auditorium. As I said earlier, we have a lot of important things on that agenda. We encourage people, if they are interested in them, to absolutely make sure they attend. I also, you have heard of this before, uh, the Montana Institute. Um, that is a professional development opportunity in Big Sky, Montana. We've had people attend before. If you remember, Wes Paul had attended, a couple of the staff members had attended, have attended. Uh, Kelly Reed reached out to me from the Easton Wings of Hope and did invite me to attend this year. The topic of, or the theme of the conference this year is the paradox, paradox of the positive preventing harm by promoting health. Super timely in a lot of ways. And so we're hoping to get a lot of ideas of how not only we can use uh, and incorporate many of these themes and ideas into our school system. But also how we can uh, partner with the Eastern Wings of Hope to bring these things to our, our students and our staff and families as well. Oh my goodness. A reminder that Special Olympics is going to be on May 5th. It is open to students and parents and families. It is not open, however, to the general public. We're going to be having, now that we're on campus, we're going to have a lot of students coming over to cheer on their classmates. And we just want to make sure there's not a lot of public interaction with that. Um, and then it's not overcrowded or over-stimulating for the athletes participating. I want to give a shout out to Lynn, my administrative assistant extraordinaire. We are celebrating our administrative assistants tomorrow with a luncheon. Yesterday was Administrative Assistant Day. And I thought you'd want to know, since she is also administrative assistant to the school committee. I'm sure you want to uh, give her a high five as well. I also want to give a shout out to Assistant Superintendent Chrissy Pruitt, who was just uh, accepted, your balloon's not showing, was just accepted to the Boston College doctoral program. Congratulations. She is going to be working on her doctorate. If you have any questions about that, when it gets Assistant Superintendent note, she can tell you about that. But um, as she has been accepted to BC, when she successfully graduates and finishes her dissertation, she will be a triple eagle. So there you go. I also have asked our SRO, Chris Aker, to join us at one of our next two meetings to give a summary of the school year. Um, pertinent ta- pertinent takeaways, observations, uh, success stories and be able to answer any questions you might have. Let me just make sure that's everything. I think it is. I think that's everything for this evening. It seems like we haven't met in six months. I don't know why I had some. 'Tis the season. It's that time of year. Uh, I will stop there and maybe remember something, but that's everything I have right now. Thank you for your patience with that.
Great, thank you. Uh, all right, next up, Assistant Superintendent Notes. This is Pruitt.
And you know, I just wanted, just to say that Dr. Cabral, there are so many things because there's so many things going on. And it's really, it's been, while we're all sitting here looking at our calendars every day as we walk in, like, oh my goodness, we don't, we don't have time to breathe. It's, it's such a great feeling to be able to do this work again and focus solely on this work. So I just wanted to articulate that. Um, and as far as my doctoral program, I'm, I'm super excited and I would not be able to do it without the support of Dr. Cabral. And she has really been instrumental in encouraging me to pursue this, um, and get this excitement for learning again. Um, so, I, I mean, I'm always learning, but um, in this directed model. So uh, thank you very much for your support. Um, so I wanted to update you on our Director of Special Services um, process. Um, and where we're, where we stand right now. So we had 17 applicants for the Director of Special Services. Um, and we have been meeting as a committee. Uh, Jackie Weisman is participating as a school committee member. Um, we have 10 people on our committee. Um, and we have a very, very rigorous process that we, that we are putting together and doing in a very short period of time. Um, so we have decided this evening to um, out of the, the 17 that have applied, we will be um, going forward with six to um, to interview. So we'll be contacting those candidates tomorrow for interviews for next week. I, again, it's a very short turnover rate, um, turnaround rate, I should say. Um, but it's it's a, it's something that we're, we're very passionate about and everyone on the committee has been great so far. Um, we are going to be having two rounds of interviews. So the first round is next week and the second round is the week after that. Um, when I say two rounds, after the first round, we'll decide who to put forward to the second round of interviews. Um, so, so I'll keep you posted as that progresses. Are there any questions about that process before I move on to any other, any other of my notes? No, okay. Um, previously, at a, at a previous school committee meeting, I talked about um, how we were, I was going to be working with the assistant principals on putting together a bullying presentation for families. I met with the assistant principals this past week. They're such a fun group to work with. Uh, super excited. And we decided that we have, we have a real nice outline for our presentation. We feel that the best way to, to have this workshop and introduce this to families is actually to wait until the start of next school year. We don't want this to get lost right now in, in the shuffle of the end of the school year. Um, people, we feel are ready for the school year to end. And um, so we are going to take this time. Uh, we have another meeting in June with our initial um, um, outline and presentation. We are also going to be including legal on, on our, our legal team on our presentation to ensure accuracy and that our messaging is, is, is um, is completely clear uh, to families. Um, and we also want to make sure that, that we include as many families as possible. So we feel that once the start of the school year is, is complete, um, we will have uh, our meeting in early October. We want to have it in person, um, instead of virtually, so that, so that people can be there. Um, we will not be recording the event either, in case people um, get personal. Uh, we want to create a safe environment for, for anyone that might be sharing some, some scenarios. Um, so I just wanted to keep you posted on that, to know that it is in the works. Um, and then it is something that we will continue to do. The presentation will be posted online. We will send it out to families so that they are in the know and that they have um, really a, 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 a nice understanding of what supports are in place for kids. Uh, what's, what supports are in place for them. And also, um, when, when, um, when we can actually, what supports we actually put in place for their, for their child, regardless of, of any incident that may occur. Um, so the other thing that I had a wonderful meeting the week before vacation with our District Curriculum Accommodation Plan Committee. The acronym is DCAP. We call it our D cap. So Mass Law insists that every district have an actual district curriculum accommodation plan that identifies general accommodations that occur in the classroom um, for, in, in a general education setting. And to ensure that all principals can ensure that, that their students are receiving accommodations. Um, those accommodations in the general classroom setting as well. So we have firmed up our District Curriculum Accommodation Plan. It's being presented to schools um, next month. Uh, we, we have some people attending training over the summer. And in the fall, we would also like to present that to you at the school committee. Um, with the, the additional information, for example, For example, we really want to create a website for families off of our website, um, so that they know what accommodations can be provided for, to students, um, regardless of having a 504 or an IEP or anything like that. Um, it's really important that, that families know, um, what is out there for their, for their child if they find that they're struggling in any particular way. Um, that they don't necessarily need a 504 or an IEP in order to receive those accommodations. So, um, so that's in the works. The, the group of, of educators are just so dedicated. It's, it consists of our, um, and Y Trab, our Director of Curriculum and E.L., um, assistant principals, um, our, our coaches, our special educators, our gen ed teachers. Um, it's, it's really, it's been a great, a great process and they're really dedicated, which is, which is fantastic. Um, and then just to, to also let you know, today we ended our last session. There are six of us from Easton that have attended a, an equity, um, series, professional development series through the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. So I don't have my Day of Kindness shirt on, um, because I, we, we kind of split our team so that, um, the principals and Dr. Cabral could be here for the Day of Kindness. And then, um, Anne Weintraub, Melissa Maderos, and myself went to our final session at, um, in Marlborough on, uh, really understanding the work that needs to be done, um, here in Easton. And we're really excited about, about where we're heading and where we're moving. Um, and so more information to come on that. Um, we really worked on creating our Y and we will be in the process this summer of really working with our administrative team on that, so that we can present it to school committee and then really continue to have that work, um, for, continue that work, um, with messaging and, and really just the foundation of everything being, being, um, just that all of our work is, is founded in, um, diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And so, uh, so that's, that's kind of my updates for you. I could probably go on, but I know time is essential. So I will, um, stop there for now. Save the rest for next meeting. But if you have any questions, please feel free to ask away.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Pruitt? No? All right. So next up, we have school committee notes. So I guess we'll start with Michelle.
Well, that's weird. I'm used to being laughed.
I know. I know. Are you ready?
First, I just want to thank, um, the voters of Easton for re-electing me, um, into my third term at school committee. I'm really excited, um, for what we have planned and, um, on the horizon and looking forward to being part of that. So thank you. Lots of music stuff. Hopefully I've got it, got it right. So I think one of the biggest things, um, which is super exciting is that Easton was named a two thousand and twenty-three Best Community for Music Education by the N.A.M.M. Foundation. Um, and that's super exciting. So congratulations to Mr. Benson, his staff, and all our amazing music students. Um, Triumph had a coffee house last night, which is kind of this casual coffee house improv type music, um, show that they do. And they have, on May tenth, they have their recital coming up. Um, Orchestra, um, had a, um, one, a right to be in the MICA Gold Medal of Showcase. And that was super exciting for them. So congratulations to them. I heard wonderful things about it. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend, but I have watched it, um, on, um, social media. Um, Show Choir received a silver medal in the Waltz Am competition. And at that same competition, the pit band, um, got best pit band and outstanding brass section in their division. So congratulations to both the Ork, the, uh, Show Choir and the pit band, who often, um, is kind of the unsung heroes and doesn't really always get that praise. So, super proud of that. Um, May fourth is the Junior MAJE Festival and May sixth is Junior Semspah. And, um, May eleventh is the OA Spring Concert. Um, and then a non-music thing is May fifth is the art show in the OA Cafeteria. So all fun things to check out.
Great. Thank you, Michelle. Uh, let's see, that's DeLuca. So Nancy is going through the new order.
Um, I first would like to speak about Day of Kindness. I was up at the Eastern Historical Society today with five students and Susan Mayacuso. And they did a, those kids worked so hard, um, raking, picking up stuff, trash and sticks and cleaning up the area. And they, they really did a nice job. And of course, I, um, I took the role of, you know, because they came into the, the museum and, um, we have a Morse car there if you didn't know that. And so we started talking about history in Easton. And so it, it was, it was a fun time. It was, uh, good to talk to them and find out where they were going to school. But just, they worked so hard. My question is, did the cookout happen before the rain came? Does anyone know?
You know, I actually had to leave because we had a situation. Uh, so I, I, it was all set up. I just don't, I wasn't able to stay to serve the kids. So I'm actually, I hope so. I hope so. I will tell you, I was in the office and I heard children screaming and my heart stopped. And it turns out, it just opened, the sky opened and it was raining. So they all were running in the building.
Right, right.
At first, it was very heart-stopping.
Sure, sure. Um, and, and just the day, and just not only for Devin, but the people in the community. I think this has already been said before, but people that donate, um, you know, a place for the kids to go and work, but also food and, and just everything. It's, it's a wonderful, it's a sad time because of losing Devin, but happy that the seniors can, you know, do what they do to help. So I know they were all over town and I can't wait to see the pictures. Um, let's see. Uh, I did want to say, Lynn Souza, thank you very much for being our favorite administrative professional. And one question, one more question. Did, um, the last meeting they were talking, you, Alicia, you had spoken about, um, things getting done at Blanch Ames. Uh, they were supposed to be done by April twenty-eighth. Um, how are we doing now? Playgrounds, they didn't?
Have you driven by lately?
Uh, no, I have not. I haven't.
Um, we, so we've had some, you know, supply issues and so forth. So that April twenty-eighth date did move a bit. Um, I, my date that I'm sharing is in June, uh, just to be safe. But the new date is at the end of May. But I'm saying, by the time school gets out, it should be done for, um, summer use of the playground, um, the bus loop and the parking lot. The fields are gonna take a bit longer, but that, I had already said that anyway. Uh, but, um, yeah, nope, we're not meeting April twenty-eighth. But we, um, we're still under budget.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I just, I was just curious if anything, if it, and I understand completely. I'm just wondering what was going on. Uh, my little, my little great niece is, you know, she's like, are we gonna get a playground? So, is that it's coming? It's coming.
Coming, it's coming.
So, anyway, that's all right. And I, everything else that's been mentioned, that I was gonna mention has already been mentioned. So that's it from me, Jen.
All right. Thanks, Nancy. Jackie.
Thanks, Jenny. The only thing I really have is to welcome Lauren. I'm very excited to have you on board. I met Lauren many years ago through the Moms Club. And she's really continued to volunteer for different committees in town and with the schools and has always been a, a active member of coming to our meetings and really happy to have you on board. So congratulations and welcome.
Hey. And that brings us to Lauren. So do you have any, uh, any, any news or notes for this week?
Um, not really news, but, or notes or news, but, um, I do, like Michelle, wanna, uh, thank the voters of Easton. Um, I also wanna thank Caroline, um, for everything that you've done for thirty years. And I hope that I can make a slither of an impact that, that she has, um, during my time here. Um, I'm just really excited to be here and thank you everyone for welcoming me.
Thank you. We're very happy that you're here.
Thank you.
All right. So, um, so luckily, much of what I was going to mention has already been covered. So this should be short. Uh, just, uh, thank you to, to Dr. Cabral, to Andrea, and to the, the rest of your cabinet for all the hard work, um, on getting that budget and getting it balanced. Um, excellent presentation last night to the finance committee and the select board. Um, thank you, if any of those folks are listening, for your attention to the presentation and for asking thoughtful questions. Uh, and we look forward to getting a quorum well before seven P.M. on the fifteenth and, uh, and having the budget approved by voters at town meeting. So May fifteenth, mark your calendars. Always a, always an exciting night. Um, let's see. Coming up, I know for school events, I think we've got the sophomore semi coming up tomorrow night, which is always a fun event. So it's all of our, all of our tenth graders have fun. And we've got the PMC Kids Ride happening at Blanch Ames this weekend. So this is the first time, I think, since, uh, twenty nineteen that the event is run. And, um, it's, it's quite a blast to see all the kids, uh, the little kids out on their bikes, riding around, raising money for, um, for, uh, cancer research. So, um, hope that's a fun event and that the weather cooperates. I don't think it's supposed to be great, but hopefully there'll, there'll be some window of, of dry enough weather. Um, good luck to all of our students. Uh, 'tis the season for AP exams. Uh, I think another round of MCAS coming up at the middle school. Um, and then SATs will be the weekend after this. So good luck to all of those students. I hope you don't stress out too much. Just do your best. And then finally, I think several of us will be attending the M.A.S.C. Day on the Hill next Thursday, May fourth. Um, and that, just as a reminder to the public, is the Legislative Advocacy Day set up by the Mass Association of School Committee Members. So, um, so those of us who can take a break from our normal schedules and, and head up to Beacon Hill, do so. Um, and we, it's an opportunity for us to meet with our legislative delegation and have them hear from yet more people in Easton about minimum aid and wage adjustment factors and all of the things that we are constantly, constantly, uh, raising in, in hopes that, um, you know, that we get, we get what we need from them. So we definitely, um, uh, thank, uh, M.A.S.C. for, uh, providing that opportunity and for our legislative delegation for taking the time to meet with us and are looking forward to that.
Thank you for going. It takes a while. We do it several times, but it does make a difference.
Yep. Yep. The squeaky wheel gets the grease, right? Or so we hope. Okay. So, um, next up, I'm going to make a motion to, uh, to go into executive session to return to open session. Uh, this is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for paraprofessionals and SPIA, which is the Southeastern Public Employees Association Secretarial Clerical Unit. Can I get a second, please?
Western second.
And roll call vote?
Terrence, yes.
Luca, yes.
Western, yes.
Starr, yes?
Lumith, yes.
Okay. All right. So we will return, hopefully not too long.